I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the roll please.
Vaughn.
Here.
Sullivan.
Present.
Shower. Kenny.
Here.
Gustafson.
Here.
Clistic.
Present.
Belzak.
Here.
Six present and one absent.
We have a quorum. It takes us to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Does anyone in the audience have any comments that they'd like to make that do not deal necessarily with our agenda today? If none, we'll move to the approval of minutes. First, we have the minutes of October 29, 2019. That was our goal-setting session. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Those meetings, minutes have been approved. That takes us to the November 4th, 2019 city council meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Any questions or comments or changes? If none, the roll.
Belzak.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
It takes us to receiving of communications. Do any of the Aldermen have communications for the council? Alderman Kenny.
Mayor, I do have a communication from a former Alderman Tina Belkey, resident of Third Ward by me. I've got some questions, but I'm going to save them for later on when we get to discussion on new business.
Okay. Anyone else? If none, that takes us to the mayor's report. Prior to getting into the mayor's report, I will note that our December 2nd, Monday, December 2nd city council meeting will be canceled. We will not hold a December meeting until the December 16th meeting. The Thanksgiving holiday is that Thursday, and then the offices are also closed Friday. And to have a meeting that night would be putting people in a rush to get information out, so we're going to cancel that meeting. So please mark your calendars accordingly. As most of you know, one of our concerns is economic development within the city of Darien. And in the past Clara used to invite new businesses to our city council meeting to introduce them. It's my objective to not just invite new businesses, but to invite present businesses and present organizations in the community to provide them with a little exposure. The first group we're going to hear from tonight, as many of you know, I attended the Kingswood Academy Yala and fundraiser at Seven Bridges. I was invited there by Tammy Karam, and Tammy is here tonight. I invited her to come to give a talk, a little bit about Kingswood as one of our local private schools, and to talk a little bit about the merits of that school. Tammy?
Thank you. Business person. I'm going to hand out cards. Thank you, Mayor, and Aldermen and women. It's an honor to be here. It was honored to have Mayor represent the city of Darien at our annual gala. The gala's actually 24 years going. Our school's been here for 23 years, and we've been at our current facility with a lease agreement with the city of Darien that we've been super happy with for over a decade now. And we're very grateful for the building. We're right there on Plainfield Road and Kingery Highway. A lot of residents of the city of Darien don't always know about us, so it's a great honor that the Mayor gave us the opportunity. Many people think that we're just a daycare center. I actually came across, I thought we were a crowded studio. So we are none of those. We actually start as a Montessori preschool at the age of three through five, and we have full day and half-day offerings for our families at three and five days also. And then what that feeds into is what we're really well-known for in our community. So we're actually an independent Catholic classically-based curriculum school. It sounds a lot of fancy words, and really, it's not fancy. It's simplicity is kind of what we thrive on. So we do classical curriculum, which means that we have no technology. There's no one-to-one at our school. We go back to the roots of kind of how our forefathers were educated. We go back to the writing, the reading, the arithmetic, the history. I have four children. Two of our children are currently at Kingswood right now, and I love it. My son, when he's second grade now, when he was in first grade and began history, they started at the beginning with Mesopotamia, and that's what they do. They start, and they do the whole education through. Our students learn Spanish and Latin, starting in kindergarten. Actually, our preschoolers do get it a little bit. Our eighth-grade students come in during lunchtime to read children's books in Spanish to them. Our Spanish classes are not total immersion, but our teachers, if there's no English spoken in the Spanish classes, so it's straight Spanish. And then they do Latin. And what I love about our Latin is if you come into our school, you'll hear our students say salve, which is hello in Latin, or vale, which is goodbye. Our students are taught to greet one another in the hallways. That's a big part. So not only are we a classical base, which is a rigorous education that has produced a lot of great academics. Last year during our testing, all of our classes tested at least one grade above. Many of our students tested two and three grades above level. But what we're most proud of is the virtuous foundations that we give our students. We highlight a virtue each month. Right now on our marquee, if you drive past, it's fortitude, you know, trying to, when you're in those hard times, getting through those hard times. But we teach them the manners. So, you know, kids will be kids, and we have problems like any other school, but it's how we deal with it. We try to encourage them in their character and how they behave. So greeting one another with kindness, being respectful. A lot of times when we have new students transfer in, often we get junior high students transferring, and parents are looking for something a little bit different, and they're having that critical junior high age, and we'll have students say, "It's really quiet in here." And we're like, yes, that's exactly how it's meant to be. Our kids know when they're outside, and it's rambunctious, and we still have dodgeball, which I think in a lot of schools is actually banned. But our kids can get very loud when they're allowed to get loud, but they know it's respect and when they are supposed to be quiet. But we have a rich tradition. A lot of our students go on to high school, to many of our different high schools. And what we love about being here in Darien, I'm not from Darien, and my husband and I have small businesses, and we haven't been in Darien, though the Mayor is trying to convince us that maybe we should look in Darien, too, that we bring everybody in from different communities. So we have families that come all the way from Aurora, Plainfield, Naperville, Joliet. We have families from Oak Park. We have families from Hinsdale, Western Springs, Claridin Hills, Downers Grove. And then we have families, a few families from right here in Darien, and we have two of our teachers. One of our teachers has been on staff for 19 years that lives right here in Darien also. And actually Alderman Kenny knows some of our teachers that have been stranded in cars locked before, who he's helped out. So it's great that we bring everybody in here, and we actually hosted a connoisseur night last year, and local businesses came and provided their foods or their services that our students and our families got to come around and see. And we really try to build that sense of community and showing that the families that do come in, that there's so much to offer here in the city of Darien. I mean, we're so grateful for it. I'm impressed with everything that you guys have going in Darien. I will be, I will say that I was naive to Darien until my kids attended Kingswood, and now I'm becoming much more and more familiar with the businesses and what's to offer, and it's just been a real pleasure for us. And Kingswood is honored to be in Darien, and we hope to continue this for many decades to come. As our students and our student body grows, we hope to fill the facility, but to remain right here in Darien. So are there any questions about our school or anything?
Tammy and her husband own several humidor.
You might smell it off you right now.
Humidor shops. If you've ever been over by Standard Market on Ogden Avenue, that humidor shop was one of theirs. And they actually have, I asked the question of her husband, do people really come in and smoke cigars? And they actually have parties where people bring in, they bring in food. There's the lunch group that'll come in with their PCs and such. So I honestly did tell her, I said, I looked at her husband and said, "You know, we have a lot of vacancy in Darien. Maybe you want to consider a humidor shop in Darien." But that wasn't my reason for her to come in. I wanted, you know, when I went to the gala, I was so impressed by the children, and I was so impressed by the parents that I met, that I wanted her to be able to have an opportunity to share that with you and with the people on television tonight.
Well, we really appreciate it. Kingswood is really grateful. And did you have a question?
Maybe I missed it. How many students do you have?
So we are currently on a lower end. We're about 75 right now. So we do a 10-to-1 ratio. So we really look for 10-to-1 ratio on our students. Some of the classes will hit 13 or so. Our graduating class last year, our eighth-grade graduating class was 13, and I have to brag about them. They all made state science fair. Again, our rigorous academics really show through. And most of our kids go on to Nazareth Fenwick, Willow's and Northridge up north, and then Chesterton, that's a local school now in Lyle. It used to be in Downers. A lot of them are going to there. Then they go on to Stanford, the Notre Dame. They've been to the Air Force and Naval Academies, so they've all found some really great success. Actually, one of our, two of our graduates this last year, one was a perfect on the ACT, and the other was just one point short. Yeah, so really great things. But yeah, so and we are, it's just been a great fit for us here in Darien. And again, we have some of our teachers that have, you know, been here and, you know, grown up in this area. It's great to see them be able to work here in Darien.
Did I hear you correctly? No technology?
We have no technology. We're really proud of it. It's in this day and age, everybody's like, you know, I think that you push that stem, and I always like to say, we have no technology, and our eighth graders all made state science fair. Again, we go back to, you know, we do cursive in second grade, and we've never not had cursive. You know, our kids have to learn how to spell and grammar, because there is no spell check, there is no grammar check. And that's really what sets our children apart when they go on, especially to high school. We get references from high school teachers that you can always tell the Kingswood students, because they have been forced to. So once they do get on the computers, it's a whiz for them. We have a computer lab. As my husband would say, it's probably like very outdated, but we really teach keyboarding skills, because we know the importance. I have a daughter in college also, and she'll tell you that keyboarding skills are the most important, because, you know, when it's 11:50 and you've got to finish that 10-page paper, you better be able to crank it out really fast, where we feel like the technology changes so often. Our students really don't have to have it. We teach, the fundamentals of classical curriculum is that we're not teaching answers, we're teaching students how to find the answer. You know, we're block schedule, so our children have over an hour, hour fifteen minutes to delve into a subject. So our junior high, when they set a lab up for science, they get to get through that lab. It's not a cleanup. You know, half the time, a lot of times in classrooms, it's set up and cleanup. You know, our students have that full amount of time to really delve into the subjects, and our teachers have more time to actually spend on the subjects themselves, too, which makes a huge difference.
Anything else for Tammy? Tammy, thank you very much.
I apologize I have to leave. I do actually have a cigar event to go to right now, but thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And also, we have an open house. It's a ways away, January 31st, and it's an all-school open house for our families and outside. It's breakfast, and so we would love, we will be sending invitations out, but we will love for all of you to attend and get a chance to see our school in action. There will be, it's kind of the end of our week for a special week that week, and we will have a paper airplane contest amongst all the students also, see who's can build the most aerodynamic paper airplane. So we'd love for you guys to join us.
Thank you, Tam.
Thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to our next presentation. I put down Frugal Muse with Paul Galloway. I've met with Paul several times. I was over there last week. Paul told me he might not be here tonight because he's working the store. I don't think he can get his wife, if his wife could have come in to spell him tonight, he would have been here. But instead, we have the owner of the Wild Orchid Salon, Gail Sablet. Gail, and she's with Jim Little from the Darien-Woodridge Fire Department and Chris Bockard. So if you guys like to come forward, I'd like to have Gail talk a little bit about Wild Orchid, and then talk a little, and then I think Jim's going to talk a little bit about the event that we're going to have on December 4th. Gail?
Okay. Thank you for inviting me. My name's Gail Sablet. I'm owner of Wild Orchid Salon. We're a full-service AIDA concept salon located at Chestnut Court, which is 75th and Lamont Road. Wild Orchid's continuous mission is to create a friendly yet trendy atmosphere where you can come and be pampered while taking a pause from the outside world. We understand the importance of extraordinary service while helping you look and feel your absolute best. We offer an open, non-competitive environment, so you can always enjoy working with talented service providers of your choice. As a team, we are constantly advancing our learning opportunities, which allow us to bring the latest techniques, designs back to you in all aspects of hair design, hair color, skin and body repair, and makeup services. Regardless of the service you have chosen to enjoy, you can take comfort in knowing our staff is well-knowledge. We consider each client as an individual with his or her own needs and desires. We strive to fulfill these needs and desires of our clients. Experience, dedicated, and professionalism is what you get with our talented stylists. Your appearance and well-being is our highest priority. Besides being a full-service AIDA salon, we also specialize in hairpieces and wigs. We have private suites in our salon with friendly, knowledgeable consultants, whether you're going through chemotherapy, have alopecia, female pattern baldness, burns, accidents, surgery scars, we can help you with a solution. At Wild Orchid Salon, we provide complimentary consultations. Whether your hair loss is permanent or temporary, we have a solution for your needs. We specialize in all types of wigs, being human, human-synthetic blends, and synthetic. We consider a client's budget, lifestyle, and daily concerns with the suggestion of a solution for your needs. Our goal is to make our clients feel and look themselves. Book your appointment at Wild Orchid Salon for all your hair and hair replacement needs. Remember, the holidays will be here before you know it. Stop in and check out our holiday gift assortment. We also have a generous discount for first-time clients, which is 25% off your first service when you mention the booking. The phone number at Wild Orchid is 630-910-1101. And I'm also here to talk about Chestnut Court's holidays event. It's called the Sugar Plum Shindig. It's going to be Wednesday, December 4th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. It'll be an exciting time for everyone. Come watch Santa arrive on a fire truck. Visit with him, and don't forget to bring your Christmas list. We'll have live music, face painting for the kids, select retailers. We'll have holiday treats and beverages. There will be many retail dealers, deals, and giveaways. Come see what we have in store for you. Remember, it's Wednesday, December 4th. For additional information, you can contact myself at Wild Orchid Salon, or you could go to Frugal Muse bookstore in Chestnut Court. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is James Little. I'm representing Toy Express, and this evening I have with me is Chris Bockard and Kelly Wren. And the establishment of the beginning was in the 1980s. My mother Naomi Little and Kelly Wren's mom were basically collecting toys for an organization, but when they realized the toys were leaving the area, they felt that there was a need here that was not being met. So in the early 90s, they established Toy Express. And Toy Express in the beginning, very few fire departments were involved with it, I believe it was Hinsdale, Claridin Hills, Westmont were the first three that were kind of involved at that point. At that time, they serviced 300 children locally in this area that had needs that were not being met because of, you know, financial difficulties and hardships at that time. Currently, today, we service over 2,000 children as of right now. So there is a big need within DuPage County that we service. So again, congratulations on your 50th year anniversary, and this year, Toy Express, we're celebrating our 30th anniversary. So great milestones for both. When we look at where we put our assets at, it's with the volunteers. If it wasn't for the volunteers, Toy Express does not exist. That's why we thank the fire departments. That's why we thank the volunteers. We thank the village for allowing the police department to put a box that we can bring toys that we collect into the area. We are a 501(c)(3) charity, which is basically staffed by volunteers, strictly volunteers. And without going into too many details, a lot of ours are by around 50 members that go into making Toy Express an operational success. This year, we're going to be in the Chestnut Court. Starting December 1st is going to be our kickoff. We have a vacant building there that we've leased, and it's just, it's incredible when you give to the community what you give back, and that's what Toy Express is all about. The neat thing about Toy Express is that you have to show public need or public aids to be, to take part in the program, to be receiving the toys, and that's how we kind of do it. But we set up a toy front. It's like, almost like Toys R Us when you walk into the organization, that the parents are able to come in and pick items off tables for their children. So we think that's more a way that the parents get to kind of pick the toys, instead of us bringing to them the toys to them. So it's incredible, the support. We thank you. We just want to get the word out there. As we move forward, there's always challenges out there, so anytime we can market what we do within the community, it's a great thing. And again, moving forward, there's always seems to be a need that's always progressed to be more and more. So again, if it doesn't happen with the volunteers, the fire departments, the police departments, and many other people that are involved in this, we don't exist. I just want to give you the thank you for giving us the opportunity to stand up here tonight and let you know who we are.
Jim, I didn't know your mom was Naomi.
Yes.
She was an elected official in Darien.
She was Alderwoman here since like late 80s.
Late 80s. Yeah, I knew Naomi well. In fact, when I ran for office the first time, she was the one who notarized all of my petitions.
You know, and it's funny, because like myself, my mom and Kelly Wren's mom are both passed on now, but they were so instrumental in the beginning, and, you know, my mom's been gone like 15 years now, and still the heart continues on, and we have to step up now. All the people need to step up. And Chris Bockard, I can't say enough about him. He's really been the backbone of Kelly, too. I mean, he's just.
And you're going to be, just to let you guys know where they're going to be, there's an outlot there that currently has a dental office in about a quarter of the building, and the other portion of the building, which is all glass, is open, and that's where you're going to have the toys at.
Correct.
Okay.
Blackbuster.
December 1st.
So that's like, yeah, it's right by, it's on Lamont Road there. It's used to be a mattress store, right?
Blockbuster building.
Right, oh Blockbuster. What are your, what are your greatest needs? Are you looking for, do you have wish lists for toys? Are you looking for, would you prefer monetary donations? Obviously, you always could use volunteers, but what are your, what are your greatest needs?
We accept anything. I mean, but the toys, and if anybody goes out and they shop, they can buy an additional toy and donate it. That's great.
If I can jump in here.
Please, Chris.
If you have money, that's great. The problem we always run into. Micphone. Someone feeling hard to hear you, sorry. The problem we always run into is we start running out of toys. And the good thing is we get cash donations in, and quite often, we're doing midnight runs to Walmart. Thank you Walmart for being open 24/7 during the holiday season with a few of us volunteers, and we'll get six or eight shopping carts and run through. And the nice thing is, if you're doing it at midnight, you're not getting a lot of other shoppers upset when you tie up a lane for a half hour. So money is always good. For toys, we distribute toys from infants up to 13. The sweet area for toys and donations is always the, you know, four to nine-year-old. We have so many dolls and trucks, and they're always great. And please, if people are listening or see this, bring more. But where we run short is what do you get a nine-to-13-year-old boy or girl? Those are the ones that we always struggle to make sure we get things in for them. So if there is a specific need, if someone's going out shopping, look for the older kids. That's really where we always have shortages on toys.
Great. Thank you for that insight.
Any other questions? Are you open now, or when is it open?
December 1st. Sorry. The first day, I think we will open up the storefront is the Tuesday, first Tuesday in December, and is that the?
December 3rd.
Fourth?
It's the 3rd.
The 3rd.
3rd. 3rd. Now, the storefront isn't open where people can just come in. What we do is we contact each and every family and give them, these are all the dates that we're open, and give them an appointment time where they can come in. So we'll run through about 12 to 16 families an hour. So it's not just like the doors are open and anyone can come in. We're very organized, being a 501(c)(3). My background is accounting. I'm a CPA, so I kind of like that paperwork. So we try and keep it running efficiently, smoothly, and it's worked out well for the last 30 years.
But people can come by any time and drop off, though. What's the drop off?
Or use the drop-off boxes instead?
Yeah, use the drop-off boxes at the fire departments.
Okay.
At the storefront, we have our, the hours that we're there. We're open generally four days a week, sometimes five.
Okay.
But since being, we're all, we're all volunteers, we can't staff it from 8:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. every night.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much, guys, and good luck. And December 4th is the gala over at Chestnut Court, and we'll make sure that we get the word out about your, the toys and the donations. Thank you. I've asked Clara, excuse me, I've asked April that every city council meeting, I'd like to have at least two businesses, current businesses in Darien, stop by. And again, we couldn't hear from Paul tonight from Frugal Muse, but we'll have, probably have him here sometime in the future. That takes us to our city's clerk, city clerk's report. Joanne.
Just one item. City offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday, November 28th and 29th, in observance of Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much, Joanne. Brian, city administrators.
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Department head, information and questions. The police department monthly report. Greg?
Just one quick change to the monthly report on the crime summary. I was able to have one of the records clerks go back a little further in time, so now it's a 10-year look back versus just a five-year look back. And just looking at numbers are kind of difficult sometimes, so threw a graph in there. So that's the only change.
Any questions for Chief Thomas? Mr. Gronbeck, anything that you want to share with us?
No further comments at this point.
Thank you.
One quick question, and I asked you this before. Route 83 and Plainfield?
They're working maybe next year, next spring, for completion. It's, yeah, I know there's additional work that's going on on Plainfield, and again, the best answer I got is it's up in the air, but spring is what they're looking at.
They've even been working on the snow.
You know, and I'd like to make something clear, because I had communications from people in Darien who wanted to know why the city of Darien was allowing that to continue like it was, and I responded that that is not the city of Darien's project. That is DuPage County.
DuPage County, IDOT, and it's really Pete's project in entirety, because that's where majority of the funding is coming from.
But I would just want to make that clear for anybody who might be watching this tonight. That's not the city's project. Our projects usually are done within a very short amount of time. Our projects usually are done within a very short amount of time.
With the exception of 67th Street this year due to the weather, the unprecedented weather, weather of course.
All right, takes us to the treasures report, Michael, the warrant.
Thank you, mayor. Yes, I'm requesting council's approval for number 192015 in the amount of $811,922.65 from the listed funds. Payroll for the period ended November 7th in the amount of $252,585.81 for a total to be approved of $1,064,508.46.
Motion to approve. Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
The report has been approved. It takes us to our monthly report, Michael.
Thank you again, mayor. Yes, this is the revenue and expenditure report. This is as of October 31st, which is also halfway through our current fiscal year, so the numbers become a little bit more meaningful. One thing to point out in this report, as you recall, last month, we approved a transfer from the general fund to the capital improvement for the extra $800,000 that we identified during the course of the audit. So, that is reflected in these statements that you'll see. That being said, the general fund year reflects year-to-date revenue of $9,471,890, expenditures of $6,977,509, for a current balance of $3,308,630. Water fund year-to-date revenue of $3,664,860, expenditures of $2,865,251, for a current balance of $2,436,855. Motor fuel tax fund year-to-date revenue $342,330, expenditures of $216,797, current balance of $473,874. Water depreciation fund year-to-date revenue of $10,243, expenditures of $56,863, current balance of $2,514,940. And the capital improvement fund year-to-date revenue of $267,509, expenditures of $4,174,433, current balance of $5,130,332.
Any questions for Mike on the monthly report? If none, then I think, Mike, you can, you want to give us an update on the police pension fund?
Wanted to update the council. We did have our quarterly meeting with the police pension fund on November the 7th. And in terms of the performance of the two investment managers, we have approximately $30 million combined between the two managers, one with about 16 million, one with about 14 million. The performance for the quarter was not too exciting. I actually pushed them on that a little bit and I said, what's the result, what's caused that? And they said August. August was a particularly bad month. Things did come back a little bit in September. October and November are looking outstanding as of right now, so hoping this next quarter, things look a little bit better. But that being said, one of the investment advisors, the one with the $14 million, had a quarterly performance of only six tenths of a percent. The other one was just over 1% the year-to-date performance, but it's a calendar year-to-date is approximately 12 and 1/2% for each one. But if you look back, the first quarter represents about over 8% of that 12%. And then the second quarter would also have the March, the April month in there, which was in the last fiscal year. So, for the current year, we're, we're close, but it's not as exciting as the 12% year-to-date would sound on a calendar year basis. Everything you're hearing about the stock market is true. The markets are up 20% for the year and we're doing well, but a lot of that occurred in January, which is our last fiscal year and the police pension funds' last fiscal year. So, this quarter was sort of punk, but hoping for better next quarter. Also, I wanted to update the council a little bit. Last, I guess it was last meeting, the council approved a resolution that we forwarded to the state legislature encouraging them to adopt J.B. Pritzker's Task Force Recommendation for the Consolidation of the Downstate, which means everything other than Chicago, police pension funds, police pension, police pension and fire funds, although we don't have a fire fund that we're responsible for. And we did send that on and we were sort of curious what would happen. The police pension fund adopted an alternative resolution, not in support of that, they wanted more time for it to be studied. They passed that resolution at their November 7th meeting. In spite of that, the state legislature did pass the consolidation, but they did make some last-minute changes, which makes it not quite as beneficial. I don't have all the changes. I was looking over the weekend, it was about a 212-page bill and a lot of the changes were like underscored and referring back, so, but some of the highlights I can give you. Naturally, it's like making sausage, as everybody's aware how state law or federal law gets, gets done. But there were a couple of complaints by the police in particular. Right now, as you're aware, we have five members on our fund, three, two of them are current officers, one is a retired police officer, and the two are residents appointed by the mayor. So, it's a three to two majority of the police. Under Governor Pritzker's proposal, it was going to be a four to four tie and in the end result, the compromise was the police still wanted jurisdiction on that. So, it goes a five to four. So, there's still a five police majority versus four appointed by the mayor. The main reason for that, what their main goal will be now, because their goal in terms of the investments will be taken away as a result of this consolidation, the main purpose to that is to determine eligibility for disability if any cop is injured while on duty or whatever. There are hearings that are held on that to determine when it's full disability. So, that still gives the police, not saying they do anything inappropriate, but still gives them a little bit higher influence than, than the other residents that are appointed by the mayor. So, that was one area of compromise. The other thing that I was a little disappointed in, back in 2011, there was a tier-two retirement fund for anybody hired after 2011 where the benefits were somewhat less generous to try and make the plans more sound. There was some give back on that in a couple of things that I've been able to identify. They've increased the benefits for surviving spouses under the tier-two and they've also increased the pensionable base. That was sort of fixed at about $108,000 and now they've increased that for cost of living and everything, so it can, basically it can go up in an unlimited amount. So, there is some give back, which there are going to be some savings on this or hopefully better investment returns, which will encourage the performance to do a little bit better. But on the other hand, they gave away some additional costs, there's going to be some additional costs, obviously, with the higher pension benefits granted to the tier-two. So, those were a couple of more significant consequences of that. The other thing is it's not going to happen right away. It's supposed to be occur, the transfer of funds is supposed to occur within 30 months, so we have two and a half years. So, it's still quite a bit of time down the road. The one encouraging, other encouraging aspect is the, as you know, especially if you've been here for a while, the newer aldermen aren't aware of this, but we have our actuaries that prepare the actuarial report and then it was presented, I know, we've all gone through it at least once this year. And I know Alderman Shower, one of his big complaints are the actuary for the last three years has changed some of the assumptions in the actuarial report, life expectancy and whatnot. And basically, all 650 downstate pension funds all had to hire their own actuary and all the actuarial assumptions, it could be 650 different boards with different assumptions, completely different assumptions. That's going to be consolidated at the state level too. So, at least we'll all be sort of on the same field, so we won't have to worry about 650 different actuaries using their best guess as far as what the amount would be. So, I'm happy to hear that part of it. Also, if there is any, if there are any changes in actuarial assumptions, they will give a three-year catch-up instead. As you're aware, this year, they made some changes in the assumptions and we got piled in all of this year, so it increased our contribution by almost a couple hundred thousand dollars this year. That would at least be smoothed over a three-year period if there are any changes to it. So, those are some of the highlights I've seen. I'm sure there's a lot more things that have changed and once we get a little better idea, once IML or somebody has the patience to go through that 212 pages and summarize it a little bit more, I'll pass a little bit more on, but that's my best reading of it as of right now.
Any questions for Mike? That takes us to standing committee reports. Do any of the aldermen have any reports to submit? Alderman Belzak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next municipal services committing, meeting will be a week from today, which is November 25th at 7:00 p.m. in council chambers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Police committee met tonight. We have minutes to report to the clerk and our next meeting will be on December 16th at 6:00 p.m. across this park line in the police training room.
Thank you.
The economic development committee is meeting this Wednesday, November 20th at 7:00 p.m. in council chambers.
Thank you. Takes us to questions and comments, agenda-related. Anyone have any comments in the audience for, on our agenda tonight? If none, then we move to old business. There being none, we move to the consent agenda and I'll read each of those items and it should be explained that item D was moved to new item, new business, item B. A, consideration of motion to approve a resolution approving the partial year membership in the DuPage Mayor's and Managers Conference. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance levying taxes for the general and special corporate purposes for the fiscal year commencing on the first day of May 2019 and ending on the 30th day of April 2020 for the city of Darien, Illinois. Item C, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May 2019, ending on the 30th day of April 2020 in and for the city of Darien Special Service Area Number One, known as Tara Hill. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderwoman Sullivan, and the roll.
Kenny?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Takes us to new business. Item A, under new business, consideration of a motion to accept a proposal dated November 11th, 2019 from Metro Strategies to conduct a communications analysis and develop a resident engagement plan in an amount of $4,200. Motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Questions or comments? Alderman Gustafson.
So, this initial 4,200 is really just for this evaluation that they're doing. Now, what's the long-term thoughts of utilizing Metro going forward? How do we, how are we seeing that?
We actually had a discussion with them and we saw some of their presentation items. They actually would develop a yearly calendar and by month, they would have dates on that for items that they know we have yearly. They would develop a, they talked about, they would handle our daily social media where they would actually put out announcements, but they would actually meet with us to collect that data and then they would put that out. Let's say, for instance, economic development wanted a brochure that they could hand out when they went from business to business, the members of that committee, they could produce that, but I think that would be an additional cost to their regular services. They would do a quarterly newsletter. So, as opposed to Neighbor's Magazine, they would do a newsletter similar to the one you see in here for Will Met, which would be concentrated just on the city of Darien and not the Park District or District 61 or 63. They would also, if we wanted them to advise us on our website design, but I think that's again, addition, an additional cost.
Well, that's part of their review, but they don't, they're not the technical experts on the web design, but they would take a look at it as they will all of our communication tools and evaluate those.
Would they handle, would they handle the direct connect or that's something?
That is, they would handle all of our, our social media. In other words, we wouldn't be putting out a direct connect every Friday. They would be putting out something possibly every day of the week.
Okay, but we still, so if something came up where we wanted to push it out to direct connect, something sensitive, emergency or whatever the case may be, is that something they would do or is that something we would still do?
That's something they do. Yeah, they do that as part of their services.
They basically would provide us with an analysis and recommendations, but they'd also give us like a shopping list. So, this is what this costs. Like, you know, it's not like it's going to be like all or nothing. We could totally, from a, exactly. Budget and, you know, decide, there are some things that might make sense to still keep in-house, some things might make sense to outsource. Or, you know, maybe we can't afford to do all of it at once. We, you know, roll it out at a different pace. But one thing I was most impressed with them is that they, you know, because I've done a lot of work in the communications industry, they're so specific to like municipalities are very different than like, say, a hospital or a bank or even a nonprofit organization. And that really is a niche they have that really came to light to me during that meeting. But, you know, they really can serve us that, our needs a lot differently than, say, you know, an organization that maybe works in healthcare.
We, we talked about the possibility of freeing up Mary Belmonte, who now handles direct connect. If they handled those type of notices, then Mary might be able to be assigned some other responsibilities besides the building department.
I mentioned this during the workshop too. One of the critical components is their responses to people who do post on social media. You know, again, we get the message out, we look to answer questions, but there's a lot more talk on things like Nextdoor and all of those that we just simply don't get back to residents. And I think that's the engagement part we're missing. If somebody has, has a question, we could do that, we can get back. But even people commenting and different things, it's, it's much, much more beneficial to reach out to those people also. We just, we do not do that due to time commitment and some of it gets a little bit tricky in terms of the responses because we definitely don't want to get in some of these disputes that are on websites, but we certainly want to make sure the information gets out.
What I also like is they would handle any press releases or our public relations, they would be part of that. And again, Jenny was a reporter. She's worked in government. She can appear before a camera and have no problem representing the city of Darien.
But just to be clear then, the 4,200 is really just for their initial evaluation?
Correct.
And then beyond that, these other services you're talking about, they would give us the cost for those?
Correct. We would make that decision as we build a budget.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get to.
And we would look at the current, you know, budget we have for things like our Neighbor's Magazine and we would, you know, kind of start from scratch on all of that because by, by, if we were to bring them on, that doesn't mean there's a cost increase necessarily. It might mean the way we're spending money now will be shifted around a bit.
Would they be able to give us a total then of the whole package?
Oh, yeah. Whatever.
And we could pick out?
And we can decide at some point, yes.
Okay.
Just a quick question. No, I'm in favor, but I guess the question I have is, is only one company Metro? Has there any other companies that have been evaluated? Usually if we do a bid out for a project, we have two or three and I only seen one person come to the table. That's, that's my question. So, I was looking at like, I was looking for like Naperville, Downers Grove, since those are the communities we were looking at.
Yeah.
So, I'm just wondering who they use or?
A lot, a lot of the communities.
I'm going to get this question from residents, like how do they get picked versus anyone else? I'm like, I don't know.
A lot of the councils have staff internally. I reached out to another company who claimed to do similar work. I did not get back the documents I had asked for, so, but we did have a conversation. But I, that company, again, part of what they do is sell software for communication, so it's a little different. But I found this company and I felt they were the best one out there and the other company I talked to just did not respond. And it's interesting when we, when I talk to a couple of the people and the gentleman on the phone, a lot of the work, when you say, you know, it's municipal government work, they think it's politics work. You know, it's not, it's, yeah, it's not elections, we're not doing that, we're trying to engage the community. And again, that's where Metro's just stood out from at least the other company I've talked to and the other companies I've researched because they are municipal engagement and communication groups.
Seems that they have a niche.
They have a niche, yes.
And usually when you're having those niche products, I mean, you know, Mr. Gronbeck will tell you, you know, we know from, or try and bid out jobs for municipal services. A lot of times, they're bidding stuff out and we can't get somebody to come back. So, I can see where this would be, you know, very hard to put out a proposal, have people to come back just based on that niche.
Yeah, I don't know where the 4,200 is. That's probably the lowest cost, highest cost, reasonable cost, I don't know. So, I was just looking just roughly, but for now, I'm fine with it.
Okay, question. If no more questions, we have the roll. If no more questions, we have the role.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Item B, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution approving an extension of the employee leasing agreement with GovTemp's USC LLC. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Gustafson, communicate, discussion.
I had a conversation this morning, or actually this evening, email correspondence with Tina Belkey. And her concern was, first off, being on the consent of agenda, felt that from a transparency standpoint, the residents should hear some discussion, you know, on this. And it was her recollection that a couple of years ago, when we were going, going to GovTemp, that Brian had brought it to our attention to go this route and that Brian would be retiring. And it, a lot of things seemed it was, it was kind of, you know, formed around, you know, Brian's, you know, departure versus, versus staying. And there was a lot of, I don't want to say a lot, and I'm quoting from her, that there were things that were molded to benefit Brian so that when two years of this contract was up and over, Brian would be going out, we'd be going in the direction. And it's, you know, and now he's, and, you know, things change. There's, there's a lot of things that probably happened, you know, with personal life and, and things professionally that, you know, that made you decide that you want to, you know, stay with GovTemp and stay with the city of Darien. And I think she just wanted to understand, like she said, there was, there was things, there was monies that were negotiated and were molded for, you know, for Brian, you know, because this was going to be his, you know, retiring and moving on. But now we're going to, we're going to, we're going to extend the contracts. And that's what she, that's what she was asking about.
Let me respond to that because I'll give you a chronology of how things happened. When I was elected back as mayor, back in April, one of the first decisions I made was to formulate my working relationship with Brian Vanna. Because I knew my success as mayor was key, was based on how well we worked together. And Brian and I actually had a discussion real early on and that discussion centered on, did he want to leave and go to California? You know, because I was part of those discussions too. And what Brian shared with me was that he had, he's taken a look at his life in terms of where he wants to be and what he wants to do. He mentioned that he had a daughter just graduating, going to be graduating eighth grade. She had four years of high school that she wanted to face that he would like the opportunity to stay on and be here for the four years that she was going to be going to high school. Because I think she graduated in May or June this year.
Yeah, started high school now.
At the same time, I thought, I don't, I enjoy working with him. We, we share a similar vision for the city of Darien. I know how much he cares for the city of Darien. And I wanted to give people like Mary and Eric an opportunity to work with Brian so they too could understand Brian's, the quality Brian brings to the job. To be quite honest, working with other municipalities and working with other city administrators, I've come to respect Brian even more so because I've seen the way he operates in a very, very practical sense as opposed to some of the things I see from other city administrators. And I don't mean to mention any of them or put any of them down, but I appreciate his clear-cut view of things and how he looks at things. So I talked to Treasure Cor and I asked Mike to come in and Mike came in and I asked Mike, I said, what would you think if we extended Brian's contract an additional two years? And Mike and I discussed it in the office. We discussed from a financial standpoint and we discussed it, you know, what would it be if we went out and hired someone new? You know, what might we have to pay and what, you know, what would that mean in terms of transition between Brian and someone new? And the conclusion we both came to is this was a good deal to continue Brian's contract, actually to extend Brian's contract. So we, Brian and I talked, we talked a lot. Brian put together documents. Mike and Brian and I sat down and we talked and we actually ironed out some things. We clarified some things within that document. And so the, the document you had before you, it's really taken probably a couple of months from our initial discussions to where it is today, what sits, what's before you. Now, some people might say, why wouldn't you just open this up and open up a new contract and redevelop this? Well, first of all, I could go to GovTemp and say, let's renegotiate this. And GovTemp may say, well, you know, this is what we told you Brian would make one, you know, a year and a half ago, but this is what we would want to charge you now for Brian's services. So rather than avoid that, I felt Brian was the best individual to deal with because Brian is an agent of GovTemp's and is, could negotiate the contract on his own. So we did make modifications to it. We added reimbursement for his, for his unused days, sick days. We sided with Mike's concurrence that we would reimburse one half of that. We decided to let him use the city vehicle, which he will not use a lot, but he'll get a chance to use the city vehicle. And we also changed any type of termination agreement. In the past, we would have paid Brian $2,600 per month for any remainder of the, of his contract still open. Whereas in this case now, if we terminated Brian, it would be three months. So this was all initiated by me. I, I enjoy working with this man. I think he, he does a fine job for the city. I don't know of any of you who have come to me that have said anything different where you felt that he didn't do the fine job that he does. I think it's to our advantage as a city to have him here. And usually the city administrator's term runs concurrently with the mayor's four-year term. So in, in my mind, extending the contract was a better proposition than renegotiating a whole new contract. And that's really why this is before you tonight.
And I, and I agree and I concur, okay? I'm not, I'm not trying to, you know, I just, I had somebody ask a question, I'm like, fine, we'll, we'll get it out here, we'll discuss it. It's great that you're, you're there. I did some research today. I mean, you know, Dave Feldman over in Downers Grove, he's making $195,000 a year, we're at $177,000.
That's in salary, you gotta add a lot of benefits.
Right, right, benefits too. So that's, that's, you know, so that's, that's great. I mean, you, you go out and you look, I mean, Glenview, I think is 49,000 residents and it's $314,000 as their manager.
Don't tell me that.
So you, you do, you do, I did my, I did my homework today and I'm like, that's the only reason I'm bringing it out. The only other thing that she, that Tina had brought up is, and I said, you know, from a, from an exit strategy standpoint, not that you're, you know, you know, we're looking maybe four years out, but what happens if something happens? Heaven forbid, you know, accident or whatever the case may be, you know, you have to leave in a year and a half. What is our, what's our progression? What's our transition? Do we have people within the city that could, that can step into those roles? A lot of these municipalities do have assistant directors that are, you know, costly and we don't. And I believe that, you know, GovTemp's probably, it's a, it's a, we're in a good position that if that something did go with it between what we have with our, with our new city planner and with Lisa Clem and GovTemp, I think we'd have a way of having that, that transition built in. So I, I believe we're in a really good spot.
And I agree with you there. I mean, let's say Brian decides two years from now, he wants to go to California with the family. We have got the availability of GovTemp's. We also have an individual who's worked for the city at that point almost 20 years, who knows the city well and knows the needs of the city, who could help us in that transition in terms of assisting us getting someone on either an interim basis or a permanent basis. When we first looked at replacing Steve Manning, we were looking possibly for interim at that point. But what we did is we found, we found Joe, was it Henefron? We found Joe and Joe was so impressive in terms of his background that we offered him the, the full-time job because we felt at this point, we don't need an interim, this was the person that we wanted. We might find ourselves in a similar position to that if he ever does decide that he wants to leave. So I, I think you're right, Joe. I think we are in a good position. We have an experienced city administrator who knows us well. He works well not only with the mayor, but he works well with the council. And, you know, Brian and I, we sit and talk almost every day that I'm here, we sit down and we talk. And we talk a lot about our vision for the city, where we want the city to go. He's not afraid to tell me, you're off based on this. We're not afraid to disagree. And I think if any of you went in to talk to him and shared, and I know you go in and you do talk to him and I know Eric does as well, as does Mary. And I would invite all of you to do that because I know he will tell you the truth.
Not at the same time.
Yeah, not at the same time. But he will, he'll tell you and he'll fill you in on, on his, his, he'll give you his input and you may disagree with him, but you at least will disagree with him in a respectful manner. And I appreciate that.
Just to add, I mean, I usually like to put things in its simplest terms, not, not make it confusing. And when I heard Tina emailed Alderman Kenny, I called him and he sent me the email, I took a look at it. And, you know, again, I would debate the things, it just, to me, wasn't accurate in terms of where we ended up. But simply put, the cover memo in the packet lays out really the cost to the city to have a city administrator versus how they do, how the city does it now, versus how the other option was, whether I was the full-time employee or somebody else was a full-time employee. And, and those other scenarios, you know, are more, are more money. And not only did I contemplate the possibility of relocating to California because my two older children, my two older adults now live in California. But, you know, I thought, I contemplated that, thought that was a possibility. But there was another reason I also had talked to the council about, but I am sensitive about salaries in the public sector. And this was certainly a way that it would reduce the compensation that the city pays the city administrator, and that was one of the other items. But again, it's, it's, to me, it's a simple, it's a simple item. Here's the benefits and here's what the city's paying versus other options. And I, you know, I've told all of you here, I'm, I'm very fortunate to, to work here. I get up in the morning, I don't, I don't kick the door in the way out saying, oh, I have to go to work again. You know, this for me has been a great home. City administrators don't always get the opportunity to stay in a community that long and work with, I don't know, I can't even count how many elected officials now. I've worked for three mayors, a, a great staff that again, if anybody comes around the office, Dan and I are similar, we don't always agree, but, but we certainly get things done, push it forward. The chief has been a great leader in the police department and a great educator and has, has done so many good things here. So I'm pretty fortunate. So again, I was happy to have this on the agenda tonight and pleased. So when I'm hearing, you know, I might leave for whatever illness or all these other things, it's a little bit of a downer, but this should be a, a very good thing.
But it's real, but it's, it's a real, it's a realistic comment. It's a realistic, you know, thing to, to think about.
Exactly. And, you know, in a smaller community where we don't have a lot of positions and we've scaled back, you know, a transition is, is a friendly transition. You know, come time when, when there's a time for retirement, I wouldn't leave the city hanging, there'd be a long transition. Now, if something happened where I fell, fell ill or something, that's a different scenario. But there are companies like GovTemp who's, again, they're the premier company here for, that many retirement city managers would work for. That, that would be a normal transition in a situation that was, you know, not contemplated.
You know, I think the thing that needs to be mentioned is Brian did not need to do this. He could have continued working for the city as a city of Darien employee, getting his benefits, getting his annual raises on a year-to-year basis until he maxed out on, on his pension. He chose this path. Now, just to let somebody, the public know, because we're being transparent. If Brian Vanna had continued to work as an employee of the city of Darien, would have been, the three-year cost would have been $760,000. That includes benefits. I don't mean to say that's salary, that's including benefits. The cost to the city from GovTemp's over that same three years is $532,000. So we are in effect saving $227,000 over that period of time. And again, this was a choice he made. He could have continued as an employee of the city and he chose this path because at that point, he was possibly looking at moving to California. But again, that changed. He and I have had these discussions. He knows my feelings in terms of wanting him to continue working with me. And so that's, that's why you're looking at this tonight. Now, Mike, you said you want to add something?
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments, particularly for the newer aldermen here. Back when this was originally proposed, former Alderman Belkey actually raised the issue, well, how much would a new person cost? What would it cost us to get somebody to replace Brian? Does this make economic sense? And as you probably recall, we did a study and we did go out and survey the surrounding communities to find out what it would cost us. So it's not like these numbers that Brian's presenting are way off the board. In fact, I believe there's somebody that was hired currently or recently, you say for Westmont or Willowbrook?
Willowbrook.
And so, so we know these savings are legitimate. And again, former Alderman Belkey was insistent at the time and we, again, we did our due diligence. There are savings and these savings, the nice thing about adding two years to this contract are, it continues those savings going forward because it essentially freezes the amount at where it is. And again, as Alderman indicated, he wanted to give everybody a chance to work with the new alderman. And the reason it was on the consent agenda is, I mean, at goal setting, I mean, everybody was concerned about, hey, what are we going to do for a lot of our high-end administrative people? And we would like to keep them here. And we had it at the Administrative Finance Committee meeting and it was very unanimous. And again, the unanimous votes typically go on the consent agenda. So it wasn't that we were trying to shortcut anything here from Alderman Belkey's perspective. And I know she made some comments in the email as far as, well, what about this amount and that amount? Well, originally when we were negotiating it, we were going into a lot of little specific amounts as far as what Brian's getting and what he's not. And we just said, hey, we don't want to deal with all the little Mickey Mouse stuff. This is the amount, the 177,600. It's all-inclusive, all-in and there's nothing else to be dealt with, which simplified the process.
See, and the other thing to understand, Joe, is, and you may remember this.
Guys, don't shoot the messenger. I have a, I have a constituent who wanted to hear nothing, that's what I'm doing here.
No, 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 but I wanted to explain this for the public. You want transparency. Tina was part of all the discussions up to a point. And then Tina left the council and we made the new appointment of the new alderperson and they came in. And the final package was different than what Tina had been part of in terms of the discussion. And so Tina had an idea that possibly we were, we were paying Brian's health insurance or part of his health insurance. Brian is paying his own health insurance. You know, so those are the things that were discussed, but weren't in the final document.
Thanks, Mary. Just for clarification, on item three, it says 50 days leave time available. Is that for the next two, three years? Is that like 10 weeks per year? I guess I don't understand.
Yeah, the, the, the leave works exactly as it does now. And there's 50 days of leave time in there. So that's all leave time, sick time, funeral time, vacation time, personal days, whatever may come up. It's those days for the, typically for the year that runs from the contract year that's stipulated in there.
So is that use it or lose it or do you get paid out? Because like at my company, if I don't use my two weeks vacation, I lose it or how does that detail work?
Well, this, the change here is I can sell back up to half of those days.
Okay.
And I'll give you an example of, of this year. Because the contract actually went a little longer because it wa, it ran till I think it was June. I had, by April, there was 10 days I didn't use, but I knew I was having hip surgery.
Yeah.
And I was able to use those. So I don't, it's not unlimited carryover. And it's similar to what we had really, most employees have here in terms of the sellback.
Okay.
For unused sick leave. So that, that's the only, of the contract, that's the only challenging part because, you know, come March, if all of a sudden I didn't use 15 leave days.
I got more vacation.
And I wasn't sick. No, I, well, sometimes you can, sometimes you can, it just depends. I love my vacations as well as anybody. But again, being a smaller staff, we, we don't always get all the days and, but.
That contract, Tom, it's the same contract. If you read the contract, our contract with GovTemp's was for 1,600 hours. It was really 2,080 if you had a 40-hour work week in the 52 weeks. So the contract is for 1,600. So that's really what makes up those other 50 days.
Okay, yeah, I can just see a resident, she's like, Tom, how's that, like 10 weeks, right? Let's divide it out and listen to that.
The only difference being with the potential sellback for 50% of the unused.
Okay.
Any other questions? Alderman Belzak?
No questions, comment? I think it's a great deal for the city fiscally and I've always thought that way. I guess my only question is, why are we doing it a year and three months before the contract ends? I mean, it seems like way in advance. Again, not necessarily against that, but I'm just curious as to, this, this doesn't go into effect till April 1 of 2021. And then the, I just wanted a little clarification on the termination agreement. Currently, it's, if we terminated the agreement right now, it would be 2666 per month remaining on the first three years, correct?
Yep.
Okay. So now as of, that's still in, stays in effect until April 1 of 2021, correct?
No, that basically that goes away.
Or is it changed?
That, that part just goes away.
Effective immediately?
Yeah.
If you were to be terminated, you would have to get 90 days notice, is that, or, or are you getting 90 days pay?
No, just notice.
90 days notice.
That's what I talked to the mayor about. If, you know, if, if the council ever did want to make a change, that's all I ask for is.
No, no, and, and that's what I thought it was. I just wanted to be clear that, but that's effective immediately.
Correct.
Okay.
And the reason we're doing it now, Tom, is to be quite honest, I wanted to make sure that I had a city administrator for the entire four-year period. I, I did provide some leeway there for Mary and Eric to learn, to work with Brian. So they'd have, you know, and I probably could have gone longer, but I thought, why not now? You know, why not? why not have this discussion now? And I, I think Mary and Eric both have spent enough time with Brian to understand who he is. And the rest of you have all worked with him for a longer period of time.
No, I, I, like I said, we, I, I agree. We save money based on having to go out and have a different administrator, or by not having this agreement and paying what Brian was making. And even with the numbers we had in there, it would be more than what it was, assuming he received raises at the same rate that he had previously. I mean, the last number, what was it, 259 in compensation, total compensation? I mean, that's going up every year.
Right.
So in years four and five, we're actually saving more money per year. So it is a good deal. I, I was just curious as to, you know, why we're doing it now.
Yeah. Also, on the, on the timing of that, you know, there was, originally, it went past the term of Mayor Weaver's term, just a couple of months, so the new mayor would come in. And then it had an automatic renewal. But I think if, you know, if, if the timing was different, I would imagine the mayor and I would have had that talk at that point and could have made it the full four years. But it happened a little bit later, so made sense for the term of the mayor.
Any other questions? I think we have a motion and a second.
Yes, we do.
We have the roll?
Belzak?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Motion is approved. It takes us to questions, comments, and announcements. Of a general nature, do any of the aldermen have an announcement? Mary?
Just a reminder, everyone received an invitation for the 50th birthday party gala on December 13. All the aldermen and city folks did. Friday, December 13, at Carriage Greens Country Club. The entire community is invited to partake in this event. You can go to the city website to get more information, but the cost is $40 per person. And they are trying to get all the registrations in by December 4. And you can also go online and register with the Darien Chamber of Commerce, darienchamber.com. And I think it'll be a great night celebrating our city. All the who's who of Darien will be there, right? And we have who's who. I would like to, you know, let's all think we are somebody, right? We're on TV.
It's the surgery on the foot, Mark.
Yeah, yeah. And then I'm probably the city liaison to the Citizen of the Year Committee, which has started their work and has started promoting the application process. It's on the city website. It's been in the direct connect. I highly encourage our community to apply, to recommend. It is due by Monday, January 6. But we have, if, if anyone here or anyone in the community would like to see the, the Hall of Fame outside the council chambers, we've got some amazing people who have been given that designation, and we'd like to continue to the tradition. So I encourage people to recommend individuals to become Citizen of the Year. The criteria and all that needs to be done is on the city website.
Anybody have anything else? If none, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
He is adjourned at 8:39.
You guys don't go away. Can you get, Tom, we can get you right back. We're going to sign it in a minute.